Joining, here we go.
Do we show a flag or no, or I don't have one to hold up? I know, there you go, Susan's got one, alright. Please join me in the.
Hold on, hold on, Mark. So we've got, we've got people coming on now, so perfect. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting at the City Council of Atascadero to order, and ask Councilmember Derris to lead us in a pledge to the flag.
Alright, please join me in the pledge to the flag. Place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic. For which stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Here.
Councilmember Derris.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
All present.
Well, if you're watching or listening to the city council meeting tonight, welcome. If there is a time during this meeting that you would like to speak, either during one of the agendized items or during community forum, you might already be on the webinar and we'll let you know to raise your hand. If you are not on the webinar and you would like to call in for any public comment, you can do that, and the number is 805-538-2888. And so when you call, please let us know which item it is that you'd like to speak on. And once again, that number tonight for community forum or public comment on any item is 805-538-2888. And we're going to approve the agenda, and in doing so, we will waive in reading, the reading in full of all ordinances that are appearing on this agenda, and the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the council votes. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Derris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are now under the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and non-controversial by city staff, and they can be approved in one motion unless there's a member of the council or the public that wishes to comment or ask questions. And if, if anyone does desire to do that, we'll remove that item and we can vote on that separately. So I would actually like to pull item number five regarding the hazard mitigation plan for just a, a brief discussion. Is there any other item that a council member would like to pull? Councilmember Funk.
Yes, I'd like to pull item number three for a brief question.
Okay. Any other council member wishing to pull an item? Okay, seeing that, I will look to the public. Is there anybody on, any of our attendees on the webinar? Raise your hand if you would like to pull an item that is on our consent calendar. I'm seeing none. Luke, do we have anyone on the phone who would like to pull an item?
We do not.
Comment. And then I will ask our city clerk if we have anybody who has emailed in public comment with regards to the consent calendar.
No, we're not.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion then on consent calendar items one, two, and four.
I saw move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Newsom, a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Derris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I, and Councilmember Funk, if you would like to bring up your question on number three.
Thank you. My number three is State Route 41, cooperative maintenance agreement. And the question I have is just with that, with the work that's being done on the, on 41, we've seen, I'm hearing a lot of complaints from people about the traffic lights. Is that related to the, the timing issues in the back of the traffic with those lights? Is that related to the construction itself? And when, and will it be fixed after the construction is completed?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Funk. That is related to construction, so you can see at a couple of those intersections like Kerberell and Atascadero Avenue, that on a couple of the corners, they have double lights or traffic signals. So they put new signals in because they widen the road with right turn pockets and whatnot. So they still need to pull some conduit for that. So right now, a lot of those lights are working what's called just a time phase, so there's just a set time that they have. It's not on demand with in pavement loops that detect cars when cars are making a call to get access. So they haven't put those loops back in, so they need to finish the paving and then they cut them back in and so, and seal them up. So that is part of, part of that, part of the construction. I've been stuck at them too, so I take alternative routes when I can.
Any estimate on the timing of when that might be done and we can celebrate?
Yeah, they, you know, they, they had a lot of issues, I should say, with their plans. So there was quite a few changes that occurred out there. These are not our plans, these were Caltrans plans, I'm happy to say. But right now, I think, I think that the schedule has been kind of messed up from that. So with the weather, weather pending, I think most of the pavement has been done out there. They've probably got a couple of lifts to do. But they also have to put thermoplastic pavement markings down, and there has to be certain temperatures for that. So I just asked before this meeting about that, believe it or not, and they thought maybe in the April timeframe, just weather dependent. So hopefully March, but it could be April.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have no objection to the, to the item.
And I, Councilmember Borbo, something regarding A3?
Yeah, I wasn't, figured I could ask this later. I'm sure some people are curious as well, and I've been asked by a few folks. Some of the, the new sidewalk overall all looks great, and Caltrans is paying this for this, so we don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, but the sidewalks are kind of funky though. They're like, you know, they'll come together, they'll overlap by two feet, and they're, you know, off four feet in one direction and four feet in another direction, several odd locations. They seem to take 90-degree turns for a few feet. Can you explain if that's going to be the final configuration? Or what's that all about?
Yeah, if it's concrete, it's probably, you know, the sidewalks are all concrete, up and down, a contiguous concrete sidewalk. And it depends if it's like a developed parcel or an undeveloped parcel generally. I mean, this isn't the case on each parcel. But if it's a developed parcel, they basically built out with curb gutter sidewalk, full pavement with matching the existing pavement or roadway section. And then concrete sidewalk behind the curb and gutter. On undeveloped parcels, they have a detached concrete sidewalk, but it doesn't go all the way back. That's really meant to be temporary nature until that parcel develops. I look at some of this stuff too, believe it or not, I'm like, why is that so low, below the pavement? And I, I'm just going to wait and see what happens, I guess, at the end. But yeah, I, I scratched my head on a couple of those, but for the most part, if it's developed or undeveloped, will happen. But in front of undeveloped parcels, it's more or less temporary nature. So like next to the Bob Smith industry, there's new development there. They're going to have to pull out that, that new concrete sidewalk and put in full frontage improvements. It's kind of silly, but it's, they have to have a start and end point.
Alright, thanks.
Sure.
Any other council questions or clarifications regarding A3? Okay, I see one member of the public who has a comment on A3, and I'm going to assume that that is what the hand is for. So if, Luke, if we could bring on Mr. Osland for a comment or question on A3.
Good evening, council. As a property owner and where you guys are discussing and answer Charles's question, some of those are called bike paths and some of those are called sidewalks, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public on item A3 wish to comment? And Luke, is there anyone on the phone that would like to weigh in?
There is not.
Alright. I've seen, then why don't we go ahead and vote on A3 if I could have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Councilmember Borbo on item A3. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Derris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thanks. And then I wanted to pull A5 just to be able to clarify a little bit for anyone, and I'm sure us as council members have had that clarification, but if any member of the public is looking, this is our multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan, and if you look at it, you might be kind of surprised at some of the things that don't seem quite correct or where it indicates that we have a very, like a low probability of earthquakes here, just some oddball things. And this is something that actually is, is required. It's one of those boxes that needs to be checked, and it's something that the county received a grant in order to complete, and then each of the jurisdictions were able to do their own from that. And so my understanding from talking with the city manager is that, you know, number one, this is not our, our emergency plan. It also isn't our list of assets and what we, what we see as being, you know, as we own as the city and what the valuation is. But I would love the city manager to just kind of briefly describe like that piece and what we're going to do going forward, because we want to make sure it's, you know, at least a little bit correct.
Yes, and, and there is a lot of good information in there, but there are certainly some areas that need looking into a little bit deeper and explaining a little bit deeper. The local hazard mitigation plan is a plan that we are required to update every five years in order to receive grants, state grants, federal grants, FEMA grants, and in actuality, some emergency funding. This plan has already been approved by the state, and we are just past our five-year deadline, and so staff is recommending that we adopt this plan. And then what we do is we get a local city committee together from staff and review the plan, which is 1,400 pages for the county plan. Our annex is about 35. Update our annex so it's more meaningful to us. This is, as you said, this is not our emergency plan. This is not our infrastructure inventory or inventory of critical assets in emergency. Our fire chief is going to tell us a little bit more about the Atascadero Know Your Zone and Zone Haven software that we are using that has a lot of detail on this. But this is something that we do need in order to get those grants. And so at this point, staff is recommending that we adopt it as it is. And right now, our evacuation plan and some of that is our first emergence, our first priority, and then we would, we would be hitting this later.
And the ramifications of us not doing this and waiting until we get it, what we consider as right, is that we then would not be eligible for, you know, grant funding reimbursement in terms of emergencies and things like that.
That is correct. There is that potential, yes.
Okay. Any, any council questions or further clarification? I've seen that, I will go to the public and see if there are any attendees that might have any members of the public. I'm sorry to call you attendee, that's what Zoom calls you. So any members of the public or anyone on the phone who's wishing to speak. I'm not seeing any hands, but if you do have a question or want to speak on this item, you can raise your hand. And Luke, I would ask if there's anyone on the phone wishing to speak.
We have no phone callers.
Alright. So we'll close that public comment, bring it back to council for a motion. Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, question first and then a motion. Just, so to clarify, the, the data that's going, most current right now in terms of our, that's really driving our local decision-making about hazards is not really this, but it's what's feeding into the Zone Haven report that we're about to hear from the, from the fires, from the fire chief tonight, right?
Yes. Yes, and it's not a, a report. It is a, a live database that can be updated and changed and is being updated and changed, much more useful tool.
Okay, great. Thank you. So people should pay close attention to the Zone Haven work and not fuss with this too much just to know that we're covered.
That is correct.
Great, okay, then I move approval.
Great, second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Funk, second by Councilmember Borbo to approve A5. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Derris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And on to updates from the city manager, Ms. Riggard.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, can you see my screen? Okay, fantastic. Thank you. The first thing I want to talk about is our Measure D20 public meetings. For the past two weeks, we've been holding virtual public meetings to gather information about priorities and goals from members of the community. The input received in these sessions will help inform the decisions made on how the Measure D20 funds and other city funds will be spent. We've had four sessions so far, and they've been very interesting. They aren't intimidating or, as I like to say, painful. I know a lot of people think, oh, I don't want to join a city meeting because that's just a painful process, and then I have to get up and speak for three minutes in, in front of a large group. It is set up so that there are small group discussions. We basically do a quick introduction. We watch a 25-minute video of staff telling you about some of the needs that we currently have and that we've been identified for that. And then we move into these small group discussions where we ask questions like what is going well with the city? What things big and small would make the city better? And what would success look like if the city spent the D20 funds perfectly? So we are getting a lot of really good and thoughtful input from these sessions and have got a lot of feedback that they actually enjoyed it and they, and they thought it was a good format. We have another five D20 sessions scheduled, and we are highly encouraging members of the community to be part of the conversation and to provide their input. The next meeting will be held this Thursday, January 28th, beginning at 6:00 PM. The remaining meeting dates and times and information can be found on our website at atascadero.org. Just click on the large yellow banner on the homepage. You do not need to register ahead of time. If you bring there and you click on the link, it will bring you to a registration page. You don't actually have to put your, your name in the registration page, you do have to put something, and then that'll just drop you right into the meeting, or you can register ahead of time and pick a future meeting date. As I said, they're about an hour and a half, so please plan on participating for an hour and a half. We, we do need to, to hear a few minutes, it takes that long. And what I really want to do is encourage people, don't wait. Now is the most meaningful and impactful time to submit your thoughts and priorities of the city. If you've come to a council meeting in June, after the priorities have been set and the budget's been set and an action plan's been set, it's just a little harder to make those changes. We want to hear from everybody now. Don't wait and say, when are we going to have this conversation? This is the conversation. Please, please join. Next thing, I want to talk to you about A-Town Skate Park upgrades. Lots of new upgrades that have been completed during the COVID closure, so there is a silver lining. A-Town Park is very excited to soon reopen and show off everything they've been working on during the COVID stay-at-home order and closure. Taking this time and opportunity, A-Town Directors Kevin and Andrea Campion, together with some very helpful volunteers, Mark Connolly and Ryan Jackson, were able to accomplish some major improvements at the park. With a sport of local fundraising, they have updated refurbished ramps, completed ramp rebuilds, and finished a great deal of additional work inside the facility. The Campions say that they are very grateful to everyone that supported their efforts, including the City of Atascadero, Rotary of Atascadero, Sylvester's Burgers with their gift card promotion, Central Coast Yard Services for landscaping, and the entire community of Atascadero for the parks, support of the parks GoFundMe campaign. With the release yesterday of a statewide stay-at-home order and the return of our area to the purple tier, reopening of A-Town Park is expected to happen very soon. And for the latest news on park opening information, be sure to follow them on their Facebook page. We are ever optimistic and are looking and accepting band applications. So the city is now accepting band applications for the 2021 Saturday in the Park Summer Concert Series. Concerts are currently being planned for almost every Saturday, beginning on June 12th and running through September 18th. We're hoping that our concerts will be able to be held live and in person at the Atascadero Lake Park Bandstand. And depending on where we're at with any COVID concerns at that time, we may have to adjust our available concert dates. And while we virtually presented all of our concerts last year, right now, we're at least preparing for the 2021 season to be in person. Band applications are now available on the city's website, and all applications are due by Friday, February 26th at 5:00 PM. So if you have a band or know of a great band, encourage them to apply. We are ever hopeful and we're also ever creative. If we have to have some modified concert series, we will do that. Wanted to tell you some other good news. The Charles Paddock Zoo will reopen this Friday and will be open daily from 10:00 to 4:00 PM. This week's farmer's market on Wednesday, the 27th, at the Sunken Gardens has been canceled. That's a little not-so-great news due to the weather forecast. They're predicting a lot of heavy wind and rain over tomorrow, and so they will come back the following Wednesday. They're just taking a little break as, as that type of weather does not bode well for the farmer's market. And then with potential heavy rains in the forecast for this week, now is the time to get over to Fire Station 1 to get your sand. Bring your own shovel and sandbags to fill, but they do have sand there located behind the station on Trafficway and Lewis Avenue, if you're worried about flooding and need sandbags. And then Atascadero Creek. There have been recent pictures of litter, graffiti, and other debris in and along Atascadero Creek from El Camino Real to Atascadero Avenue, along with a strong movement and desire to try and clean up this area and make it more accessible to the entire community. And we've been hearing a lot of that, making the rounds in various, various social media posts. Some of these posts came out of one of the D20 sessions. So see, they're fun, come attend, it's a good thing. And we're hoping to meet again with a group to discuss what is being done and what can be done to help in this area. This is an area that continues to be a challenge in spite of the city and multiple volunteer efforts to try and keep it clean. Since mid-September, when the whole section of creek was cleaned, the city has posted and cleaned up encampments in the area on nine separate occasions, with the last one occurring on December 16th, just below Tent City Brewing. And while the city will continue efforts such as encampment cleanups and its fall brush removal in the creek that we currently have a permit for by Fish and Wildlife, tonight, I wanted to let everyone know about a few regular opportunities on how they can help with that section of creek cleanup. First of all, there are two major volunteer partnership efforts that are undertaken every year to clean up section of creek. Atascadero Annual Creek Cleanup Day was held in mid-September. This annual event is a partnership between the city, the water company, waste management, and a large contingent of volunteers. Literally tons of trash are removed from the city's creeks and riverbed each year, and any group or individual is encouraged to join their annual effort. More relevant right now is the second major volunteer city partnership event is coming up and is done with, in partnership with Earthshine, a local nonprofit out of Pass Roble. This group's hosts a community cleanup event every second Saturday of the month, and February 13th, they will once again be hosting an event here in Atascadero to clean up the section of creek from Lewis Avenue to Atascadero Avenue. And potentially more, depending on the number of volunteers that register and show up. They will be following protocol, COVID protocols, and they are looking for volunteers right now. So again, that's February 13th, just a few weeks away. That's 10:00 AM to noon. They're going to meet at the Sunken Gardens at 10:00 AM, and you can find out more information at earthshineorg.com. They have a website or volunteerslow.org, look for Earthshine. And honestly, I Googled Earthshine Atascadero, and the first thing that comes up, if you click on it, it brings you right to the page that has the February 13th date. So it's really easy. Wear long pants and closed-toed comfortable shoes, and it's recommended that you bring water in a water bottle to stay hydrated. The city provides trash dumpsters and a lot of those types of things and support things. We're just looking for volunteers. You can also email earthshine@contact, contact us at earthshineorg.com or call 1-805-591-4691. Another volunteer opportunity, the Atascadero Kiwanis Club does graffiti removal throughout the city, including under both the 101 Bridge and the El Camino Real Bridge. I know that they would be happy to have other people join their Kiwanis graffiti removal team. Please contact me or perhaps Councilmember Derris, and we can put you in touch with the right people if you want to join the graffiti removal brigade. Councilmember Borbo knows a lot about that, as he was the graffiti brigade for a long number of years. And then last but certainly not least, individuals and groups that can't make one of the creek cleanup events or wants to do this between cleanup events can contact our Public Works Department at 470-3456 and make arrangements for us to help you with trash disposal, and we'll provide you with some general information, do's and don'ts. There are a lot of regulations down in the creek and particularly dealing with homeless encampments. So this is something that church groups do regularly. We do have a few individuals who also do it, but there is always room for more. We would love that. So I know that COVID has harmed or hampered a lot of activities, but creek cleanup is an activity that can still be done outside and more than six feet apart, so we encourage anyone that is interested in helping to participate with one of the volunteer groups or reach, or they can reach out to the city on how you can help. And last but not least, I have a presentation from our fire chief, Casey Bryson. He is going to tell you a little bit more about the Atascadero Know Your Zone program that they're working on, and will be rolled out here very soon, and give a little bit of a demonstration on that. Casey, you want to jump in here?
Yeah, thank you very much. Good evening, mayor and councils. It's super exciting to be able to talk about our test or evacuation plan. Let me share my screen. Can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So very excited. This is a project that's been in the works for a year or so, and we're to the point where we're going to be rolling it out here real soon. We've got some plans to get it out to the media here in the next few weeks, and so the entire community will be hearing about it, and you're hearing about the rollout first tonight, so we're excited. Like I mentioned, it's a year's worth of work, police, fire, public works, IT, GIS, city manager's office. Everyone put a lot of heavy lifting into getting this off the ground, so we're, we're proud of where it's at. As, this really was a result of council goals and action planning from 2019 to 21, where we had a goal set to ensure comprehensive safety readiness and risk, risk mitigation. And that really led us to ramp up our efforts for wildland preparedness and in terms of our community discussions with Defend Atascadero, but we realized we need to really get into a little bit more in evacuation planning and evacuation notifications. So looking into both of those, how we could do a much better job, we came across Zone Haven. Zone Haven is a relatively new company that was made up of partners from GIS company with firefighters at the command level that were involved in some of the very devastating fires in Northern California, including the Paradise Fire with a large loss of life and a huge evacuation component to that fire. So these gentlemen put their heads together and came up with a, a plan. uh, component to that fire. So these um, gentlemen put their heads together and came up with a, a plan that um, really is what we have today. And it's, it's, it's twofold. I have a couple bullet points here, but it's, it's basically an evacuation management platform that is the first responder side of the, the website. And then a community evacuation interface, which gives the public the information they need to know. Um, and it rolls into what our next step then is, is public education and a Know Your Zone campaign, which we'll be rolling out here in the next few weeks. The website there is listed, um, and we'll get into a couple of the details. First, the, the evacuation management side of it. Uh, this is for the public safety. Like I said, police and fire particularly. This is uh, the zone data that's easily accessible for uh, those that are either planning or implementing an evacuation. So I'm primarily police and fire command officers um, managing an evacuation. Uh, using the city that's divided up into smart zones based on geographic locations, features, population that some, sometimes uh, among other things. And I'll get to it in just a moment, but there is some hazard modeling that will show us uh, how that hazard, um, what its potential is and how many zones should be notified in the event of one of these emergencies. I'm going to pull up the website. Can you all see the website?
Yes, yeah.
So this is the evacuation management platform. This would be what the first responders use to manage an evacuation. So this will be our side. Uh, we have a couple of features here. Uh, can click on current fires from 2020. Got a weather feature, which is actually kind of scary on the surface winds coming up in the next few days. Um, here's our zone status, gives details on what zones are, um, if they've been ordered in evacuation or uh, back to evacuation warning, clear, that sort of thing, and a legend for icons. So if I kind of scroll out here, you can see a bigger piece of the city. If I scroll in, um, you'll have a few more details on the zones. I'll pick uh, one right here. This is on 19. There are 26 total. This would be 19. This has a our City Hall building in it at the moment. It's going to give us some information here up on the, on the side of the screen here. It's going to give us population, vehicles, the size of the area, numbers of structures. Um, that's the basic information. The pre-plan is also in a PDF form that we will carry in our command vehicles. If I click on that, this gives us um, very good details on where we need to be placing traffic control points and how we need to move people out of this zone. So you can see there are some icons there. There's a critical evacuation facilities with just a rough idea of potential population that could be located at those places. Uh, special zone considerations, a bridge that's narrow. And then we get into traffic control points as I scroll down. Really this zone, we have traffic control points on either side of the zone at El Camino and then traffic control points getting people onto the 101. So really, if we have limited resources, limited officers and public works that can help, um, these really prioritize where we're going to put those uh, limited resources to get uh, people direction to get out. So we do describe routes. I can show you where we'll, we'll use that to notify people here in a moment. We have routes. We'll tell people to take Traffic Way South to El Camino and then get on the 101 and go south or north. Um, and we're going to be using arrival points, which are basically temporary exit points from the zone. And these are based on, we'll be picking these arrival points based on where the incident is located. So if you have a fire moving from, say, the east towards the west, we'd be using arrival points on the west side. So we'd be telling people to leave via some of these routes and use the exit points and then be directed by officers or public work staff to get to the um, the arrival point and leave the zone. So really, we're, we're going to be encouraging people to know multiple ways out of your zone, uh, not just a designated evacuation route and uh, be able to know multiple ways and get out and help themselves. So I'm going to go back. Um, let's see here. Sorry about that. One other thing I'd like to mention, and I'll talk about why this is important here, is it does give us a estimate on vehicle travel, traffic at different intersections. So this, I have a vehicle count turned on. It's showing us the number of vehicles that would it be at potential intersections as they are evacuating towards that arrival point. So in this, this zone involves City Hall, you can see our two main intersections uh, would be down here where our main one would be uh, going through Traffic Way, getting to the freeway, Traffic Way, El Camino. We know those are where we need to place people where the most traffic would be flowing through to direct and get people off, out of the zone to safety. So one of our future projects that we will be starting in the next week after this rolls out to the public is validating a lot of this information with a traffic engineer. We have a traffic engineer that we've worked, uh, has worked very closely with the city on prior projects. He's going to be looking at our street widths, um, size, capacity, population, and we'll be picking several locations, plotting a fire on some of these zones and then analyzing, does it make sense to be able to move that many people out of those intersections? And he can make recommendations on where we've done a good job identifying traffic control points to place officers and where we could do better, where we could turn roads and do uh, one way and move more vehicles quicker. So we're looking forward to having what we think we've done a, a good job on. We're hoping to have it validated by the traffic engineer here in the next uh, next month. So that's, that's pretty exciting. So that is the public safety side of it. Let me move on. And I'm going to show you the Zone Haven Community Evacuation Interface. So this is really the Know Your Zone portion of it. Uh, allows people to log in, put, plug in their address and find out what zone they're, they're located in. Um, and again, the key is to know multiple routes to safety. And these zones give uh, the status of what, what, if there's been an evacuation or if it's cleared to re-enter and then some local informations. Let me pull that one up. So we'll be directing people to either our city fire department website, which will then take them to Zone Haven. We also have some of our information on the sending people to this Zone Haven website. You click Find Your Zone and it brings you to this screen right here. You can do a locate button to find out where you're currently located. There's also a portion to search your own address and it'll bring you right to your zone. So the information that, that pulls up right here is on this legend. Uh, it gives you your zone status, whether you're in an evacuation order, advisory, or clear to repopulate. If I click on the Find My Zone, just to show that this is how it would go for people, here's where they're able to search for an address, uh, type something in and it'll pop up. When they do click on their zone, it takes them to a set of information, some of that local knowledge. We've got a couple of things here. Wildland Preparedness from a Taster Fire, Ready Slow Emergency Preparedness, the Ready Set Go Wildfire Preparedness, and probably the most important one at the moment is the Reverse 911 Sign Up. So this is to subscribe to alerts. Now this, this, this may change at some point in the near future, but the best alert for uh, our community right now is the Reverse 911 through the sheriff's office for the cell phones. So that's uh, where it will take them when they click that link. And I'll get into uh, notifications here in just a moment. I'm going to pause as I go back. So emergency notifications, that was the second big part of that council action plan. And we have a couple of options here. Uh, Reverse 911 is great. Uh, works well perfectly for landlines. You don't have to register your phone. Um, if we need to notify a certain area, landlines will get called. Uh, the cell phones, more and more cell phones, fewer landlines. Cell phones have that opt-in program. You have to register your cellphone, which what is the reason why we send people to that sheriff's Reverse 911. Now I mentioned some other possibilities and we're currently working with County OES on what those possibilities are. And the, the, the biggest one that um, seems to be the best is the Wireless Emergency Alert. And that is already on all of our cell phones. It's the same basic function when we get a Amber Alert from the CHP. So at some point, we will be able to tap into that through County OES and they will be able to uh, send out a Wireless Emergency Alert. And that is not an opt-in. That is just your location of your cellphone. So we'll be able to ping cell phones based on the jurisdiction in relation to that zone and contact people that way. The other way we'll contact people, making a notification in social media and uh, we'll be able to alert zones, uh, alert people in the zone through Facebook, Twitter, Instagram on the city's uh, social media sites. And there is one more thing that I did not show, which is a pretty neat feature. Okay, so there is this feature right here. This is on the public safety side. So I'm going to show just real quickly how to make a notification. Um, it has this train function. This will be live here at some point. So this is uh, generating. This would be if we're on an incident, let's pick a wildland fire, and we are going to predict how big this fire is going to get and then make an alert to those zones that are affected. So I'm going to click on Fire. Again, this ideally is, is hazard um, modeling, but this is also how we would be able to use this function on an actual incident. So I'm going to pick a incident. It's going to use some pretty extreme fire weather conditions. And it's going to predict how far this fire will grow. This one doesn't look super exciting, um, but it is telling us which zones would be affected. And this is a pretty, a pretty tiny incident here. But uh, you get the, the gist of it, that this, this zone would be notified. We would um, make a notification right through here. It types up a dialogue box for us. I'm going to pick, I'm going to share this. So this is where the information gets to County OES. All of our social media will be listed right here. I hit Apply. Right now, it's going to go to my email. And this notification will go out via all those, all those uh, formats. So County OES through, so Reverse 911, Social Media and the We Alert will be notifying, in this case, Zone 11, that there is an evacuate, evacuation order for a fire right there on Old Moore Road. So that's uh, pretty exciting. Again, this is a lot to do when a wildfire is uh, burning through town. But partnering with the police department, uh, they will be helping us greatly on one of our incidents, as would we on one of a uh, primary police incident. And uh, we will make, be able to make a notification, I think, in a relatively timely fashion. So let me just, real quick then, our next steps. I mentioned the traffic engineer that will be taking place here in the next few weeks. We'll have analyze our zones and make sure we are on the right track. And then we're really going to be pushing forward on a Know Your Zone campaign. This is uh, some information that's going to be going out in a mailer form. So mailers will be going out citywide. Um, we will have information in here on an actual map that will be sent out. So people will not have to necessarily go to the internet or use a computer if they wouldn't, would prefer not to. We'll also have our phone number uh, that we can talk to people about this if they're um, not interested in going on the internet. But this will be the mailer. We also are looking at magnets. So here's an example of a, a magnet that would, you would see every day on your, your fridge that we would be mailing to you with your uh, spot for you to fill in your zone number. This is a sticker reflective for a mailbox. So as you drive by your mailbox every day, hopefully there's a bunch of them on your street that people listed their zones. These are actually billboards. We have the city billboard, I believe, northbound between Santa Rosa and Curb Trail. Uh, in that location, so we have billboards that are going to be ready to go up. I think first one is starting February and then a, a second version of it. So we'll be using those. We also have uh, some media going out. I'm going to show a video. Hopefully, I, I just got this uh, from our deputy city manager about 15 minutes prior to this meeting. So hopefully I'll be able to play that here momentarily. We'll be making a big uh, big pitch on our wildland preparedness this year, again with Defend Atascadero. But one more consideration is the uh, goes along with these notifications and how to notify people. If for whatever reason, we cannot notify via all those avenues I already suggested, we want to be able to physically sound a siren and drive in certain areas of a zone to tell people it's time to go. So we're using, we're putting in high-low sirens in all police and fire vehicles. We'll be able to purchase some bullhorns with the ability to send a high-low siren. And this is the European style that's not used anywhere um, in the States for emergency responsive vehicles. This will be a completely different siren. And we're going to come up with a, um, along with our wildland preparedness after the Know Your Zone campaign is a Hear the High Low, Time to Go. So one more phrase we're going to be sending out citywide, Hear the High-
I think we lost the chief there.
I think you clicked the wrong button.
He, he was, he personally was frozen for a while, even though, even though he could hear his voice.
Yeah, he might have a bad connection. Uh, let's see. Well, um, I will ask our city manager to come back on. I think uh, he was, he was close to wrapping it up, uh, doing a very good job.
Yes.
Is there anything that you wanted to add on to that?
No, this is just going to be an incredible tool uh, for our fire department and for the public. Um, and it has a lot of features he did not even show you. Uh, if you noticed, there were a bunch of zones in the county. Obviously, we have no jurisdiction over the county. Uh, but certainly the people in those zones will be traveling through Atascadero to evacuate. So we want to make sure that we're counting uh, those in our plans. Um, you, the plans multiply the number of cars in, or add uh, cars in different direction and change things as uh, you click on multiple and you're evacuating multiple zones. Um, they had some of this going on uh, during, and I can't remember any of the fires, maybe the campfires up in San Mateo, Santa Cruz and Santa Clara. Uh, they were, they are implementing this at the same time we are. Um, I can tell you uh, that I looked at it quite a bit trying to feel this out. It was extremely helpful from the uh, public view as us, that was all I could see too. Um, so if, this is a great tool. Um, I also want to strongly encourage people uh, to think about different ways uh, to get those alerts, to sign up, uh, to do things. Don't rely on one method of communication. Um, as talking to other city managers, we certainly heard from a lot of people that um, their electricity was down and they're on voice over IP, so they didn't get their landline phone. Uh, the cell tone, cellphone towers were down, so they didn't get the cellphone alerts. Um, really make sure that you're paying attention. If you have um, sea smoke and some of that, you can go to the site and figure it out. Listen for those high-low tones that we're working on. Um, and we'll go from there. Casey, did you have other stuff to add?
I'm not sure where I lost you. Sorry about that. Apparently I got kicked off. I'm back on, so I'm, I'm good to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Thank you, Chief. I want to say, like, first of all, I, those of us um, who have been on council for a while, you know that it takes like a long time to see things come to fruition. Um, because we make, you know, big policy decisions and there are a lot of things that need to come into play, public input and all of the things that need to pull together to make something happen. And so I think for, like, the four of us that were here at this time to have this coming to fruition um, fairly quickly uh, is, is really exciting to see. And you, you and the, the whole team uh, here at the city have done a tremendous job in pulling this together. And Chief, I think you and I were in the same break- And, and chief, I think you and I were in the same breakout group when we came up with Defend the Tascadero. And we were just shooting stuff around and ideas. And so it's exciting to see this all coming to fruition. So thank you for the hard work that you've put into this and everyone. And certainly tonight, we're not here to, you know, understand every single little intricate piece. But if we've got any clarifying questions, I certainly want to see if council's got any of those. And while we don't typically open up presentations to public comment, I will just see if there's anyone on the line who's got a question. So I'll start with council. Councilmember Funk.
I just want to thank Casey and, and, and all of the staff for moving this ahead despite all the challenges that we've had with the pandemic. For everyone who wonders, why should I bother participating in strategic planning or in these D20 study sessions that are going to feed into strategic planning for the city? It sounds so big and careful. This was an outgrowth of that strategic planning process. Two years ago, we made the commitment that this was a very important priority for our city. And you now see it coming to fruition. It's about to come to your mailbox, about to come to your telephone, about to come to keep you and your family safe. So I want to thank our staff for moving this along.
Absolutely. Councilmember Daras.
Yeah, Casey, I have a quick question. I kind of followed along a little bit with you on my computer. It's really impressive what, what this thing can do and the information that it provides. Is there, is there going to be, is there an app that's going to be available for phones? So you can just click it and it takes you right to it? Or do you have to have it go into your web browser in, in that way?
I'm hoping that there is a web, a web app for our cell phones soon. There isn't, is not currently. So it is designed to type, type in the Zonehaven website on a, on a computer and find your zone that way. But yeah, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that is coming. That's going to be in there.
I, I mean, I was going to ask where this could be found in. And I heard you said Zonehaven and I typed it in and it was really easy to find that way too. But a simple click on a phone in particular might be a little easier. But anyway, a really impressive system. I'm glad to see that you guys have taken this as far as you have. Thank you.
Thanks. I see no other council comments. I will open up to public comment. See, look for, looking for hands if there is any member of the public tonight that would like to ask a question or comment on this item. And I will ask Luke if there's anyone on the phone.
There is no one on the phone.
All right, well, seeing no public comment, I'll close that and bring that back. And again, a very hearty thank you to our chief and the entire staff. What a, what a great job you've done. Beautiful. All right, we are now on to community forum. And this is the portion of our meeting that's reserved for those of you who want to address the council on any, any matter that is not on our agenda this evening and over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. And please, we ask that you would state your name for the record. And comments made during community forum are not going to be a subject of discussion this evening. We do allow a maximum of 30 minutes for community forum. And any member of the public who is, doesn't get a chance to speak tonight or needs to contact us afterwards, you can always reach out to the city clerk's office between the hours, hours of 8:30 AM and 5 PM at 805-470-3400 or cityclerk@atascadaro.org. And with that, we'll go ahead and open up public comment. And Luke, if you could have the timer, the three minute timer ready. So I will look to our webinar attendees to see if there is any member of the public wishing to speak. If you want to go ahead and raise your hand in the webinar. And Luke, I see we have, I think, one caller maybe. Is that a star nine that they press on their phone?
That is the public call line that we monitor and there's currently nobody calling into that, that number.
Okay. So I'm not seeing any hands yet. I'll give you a moment to, to think about that if you wanted to. And then I will ask our city clerk if we received any public comment via email.
We have not.
Okay, thank you. Going back, I am seeing no hands raised, so I'll kind of do a going once, going twice. And all right, well, we will go ahead and close the community forum portion of the meeting and move on to, we have no public hearings tonight. So we've got two management reports, the first of which is our fiscal year 2019, 2000, or 2019, 2020 audit report. And this will be our administrative services director, Jerry Rangel.
Thank you very much. Let me just pull up the PowerPoint. There we are. Are you seeing the PowerPoint in front of you?
Yes.
So this evening we'll be talking about the fiscal year 2019, 20 audited financial statements. And we're excited to bring that to you tonight. Our independent firm of Moss, Levy and Hertzheim was hired to perform our audit work. Mr. Adam Geis is here on our call tonight and he will be able to address any questions you might have. The audit was conducted in accordance with the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and standards applicable to financial audits contained in the government auditing standards. The auditors issued what they call a clean opinion, meaning that the statements were fairly presented and they agreed with the information that was in compliance with the accounting principles. The city's financial performance was positive overall and the general fund was better than expected in the city's seven-year projection that was done in June of 2019. Tonight's focus will be on the general fund. Fiscal year 2019, 2020 was certainly challenging with the pandemic and everything else going on. It was quite the whirlwind. Of course, there was an economic slowdown related to the pandemic, which affected revenues and really reduced a lot of our revenues in TOT and recreation and those sorts of things and increased certain costs. On the flip side of that, we did have a couple of positives that were one-time kind of boost to the bottom line. That was the CARES Act reimbursement money and the SB 1090 funding, which is related to the PG&E Diablo Canyon closed down economic funding piece. Given all the circumstances, we did pretty well overall. Of course, that doesn't mean that we're out of the woods. Our, our needs certainly outpace our resources. And hopefully these D20 funding process will help with that to some degree anyways. The audited financial statements include the sales tax measure F14 activity in the general fund as required for legal and accounting purposes. As we'll hear more on the next agenda item, the city received about 2.6 million in those measure F14 funds during the year and spent about 2.4 million on projects. The portion of the general fund balance that's related to the measure F14 was about 4.2 million at the end of the year. These funds are being and will continue to be used for road rehabilitation and maintenance as laid out in the city's five-year capital CIP plan. General fund activity excluding the F14 activity ended the year with a net income of about 1.3 million. Revenues were about 26 million and expenditures were about 24.7. The June 2018 seven-year projection estimated a net loss of about 602. So there was a variance, a positive variance of about 1.9 million. Property tax revenue grew overall about 3.5% over the prior year. Property tax revenues generally make up around 45% of the general fund revenue. So we are certainly happy with any growth in this key area. The city saw a 2.4 year-over-year increase in secured property tax, which is the largest and most stable component that makes up the property tax revenue. As I indicated before, transient occupancy tax, TOT hotel tax, was down about 267,000 when compared to the prior year. The COVID pandemic took a toll on hotels with stay-at-home orders and people not being allowed to travel. Intergovernment revenues were up about 1, 1 million. And this is where the ESP 90 and the, the CARES Act funding came into play. So we received about 783,000 for the SB 1090 economic development and another 91,000 in essential services mitigation funds during the year. We also received CARES Act funding. In total, we were allocated 371,000. We recognized about 124 in the current fiscal year and we'll have another 247,000 approximately to recognize next, or in the current fiscal year, actually, 2021. Recreation, zoo, parks, pavilion, all those revenues, they were down about 300,000. Also due to the pandemic where we had to close the community center, the zoo, the pavilion on account of those stay-at-home orders. General fund expenditures were about 973,000 more than the prior year. Employee services were higher than the prior year, about 869,000, but lower than the seven-year projection by about 867,000. Both years had salary savings from unplanned vacancies in various departments. Employee services make about 72% of the general fund, so it's a big portion of our expenditures. Operational expenditures were higher than the prior year by about 500,000, but the actual results were lower than the seven-year projection. The underlying trend, of course, is toward an increase in operating costs to reflect both increasing prices and the unsustainably low operating budgets that we're currently at. Special purchases and capital outlays don't usually lend themselves to a very predictable trend line. They're usually one-time purchases or they have a corresponding revenue source. Both categories really vary from year to year based on the city's needs. In most cases, when the expenditures come under budget, that means that the budget item either hasn't been purchased yet and will still need to be, or less frequently, an alternative to purchasing that item has been identified. General fund reserves excluding measure F14 activity were just over 12 million at the end of the year. As stated, that as a percentage of general fund expenditures, reserves are 54%. Sufficient general fund reserves are an important part of the council's overall fiscal strategy and has maintained stability in services and offerings of the organization through the ups and downs of the economy. The council's overall reserve policy is a minimum of 20% of general fund expenditures. In coordination with staff, with that, staff evaluates a set of criteria generally causes a projection, I'm sorry, a set of criteria that generally causes a projected increase above 20% of the necessary reserve level. The city is a member of the CALPERS system, the California Public Employment Retirement System, and offers those benefits to its employees. The CALPERS retirement plans are included in the CALPERS Public Agency Cost Sharing Multi- Multiple Employer Defined Benefit Pension Plan, which essentially just means that we are included because we're a smaller employer with a lot of other cities in kind of a bigger risk pool, is what they call it. The city's net pension liability is affected not only by city-specific items, but also the activities of that risk pool. At the end of the year, the net pension liability was about 28.4 million. And this is an increase of about 1.9 over the prior year. And a lot of things, big and small, impact this. But the biggest single factor was the risk pools experienced different than assumed, which is kind of a catch-all category that, other than the discount rate changes that we've talked about recently in that couple of recent years and the investment gains and losses, it includes everything else. So any changes in mortality assumptions, payroll, any types of early retirement, those are all included in that catch-all category. That also includes a software system change that CALPERS did in 2018, which is just affecting us because of the timing difference during this fiscal year. And they said it, it refined their, their estimates. So, which essentially means that it increased our liabilities. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And as I said, Adam Geis is also here and he is on, available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. And I, I had seen Adam Geis on here. I don't any longer. He may be, I don't know if Luke, if he happened to call in. But we'll, we'll see if he pops back on. So thank you. You gave a very nice kind of summary and overview of our financial statements. Just for the, oh, there he is. Wonderful, good to see you. Oh, you were brought into panelists. That's why you were an attendee, brought you in. Awesome. So what we're looking at here is, you know, basically what's happened, you know, 2019 to 2020, so year-end June 30, 2020. And it's a document of about 150 pages. This one currently isn't on the website. And I'm assuming we have to wait for us to receive and file and accept this tonight. And then it'll take a little bit of time. Do we have a sense of when this will be on the city website for the public to view?
Certainly, we can get that up there tomorrow after your approval tonight.
Wonderful. So anybody who wants to see this audit report along with the financial statements, simply go to the website at Tascadero.org. And if in the search bar, you type in financial statements, it'll pull up a list. You click on the first one and it will give you a link to all, all the financial, all the audited financial statements. Like I said, it's about 150 pages. Governmental accounting is very different from, you know, typical accounting that you think of in a business realm. And so sometimes looking at these statements can be very confusing, even for the five of us that dig into it fairly well. And, and individuals such as Mayor Proton Newsome and myself, who have done this for a living. Charles is probably best at this, having been in city finance for some time. But it is kind of challenging to understand. Any questions you ever have, feel free to reach out to, to city staff, to us. And we want to make sure if there's issues and questions that you want to know about and need things cleared up, we want to make sure we, we get that done for you. And so with that, we're, this is really an acceptance file. If there are any, you know, burning questions that our council has that we want to discuss, then happy to have those now. Councilmember Warbo.
Actually, I have a comment, so I have not a question. So I'll wait till questions are finished.
Okay. Mayor Proton Newsome?
I have nothing.
Oh, okay, I thought I saw a hand. Councilmember Funk.
Yes, I have, I have some questions. One for our auditor here. How does this, the, our city's results, we came out in a, in a challenging year, came out a little ahead of where we thought we might be. Now, partly for good fortune of getting the, getting a large amount, a large settlement from PG&E right about this time. And how does our, how do we compare with other cities that you've been looking at in this period where we're hitting the first portion of the COVID impact?
Sure, that's a good question. You know, the, the TOT kind of reflects what I've seen all around. That is the, the hotel tax. And that, you know, obviously continued into the current year. But one thing I did notice in particular with your city is the sales tax did not decrease. Where some, some of the other cities, depending on the types of stores and stuff within their city, had a lot larger impact on their sales tax. You know, so you guys didn't really see the full impact of some of the other taxes and decreases that some of the other cities in the area have seen. You know, partially because you guys don't rely on tourism quite as much as some of the other local cities. But then I, you know, I think you guys budgeted well to be able to absorb it. And one thing I did also wanted to point out with the CARES Act funding, and I think Jerry kind of went over when she was talking earlier too. But the way the CARES Act funding is coming, it came in six equal portions from July through December of last year. So for the governmental funds, only the first two months of that got reported as revenue in the 1920. So the, the CARES Act, even though it was allocated to you guys before the end of the year, only the two pieces that came in in July and August got included. So the rest, the other four months of CARES Act funding is actually a revenue in the current year.
Okay, thank you. And on the, that large, 700,000 plus that we got from PG&E as part of the Diablo Canyon decommissioning settlement, what are the restrictions on those funds? That, that's probably for, for staff rather than for the auditor.
I'd be happy to answer that, thank you. At this point, we understand that- I'd be happy to answer that. Thank you. At this point, we understand that they should be used for economic development. And each jurisdiction is kind of interpreting that a little bit differently. So there is no hard fast definition as to what that means. And I've asked around to different cities and they're, they're each, you know, interpreting that in their own way of economic development. So as long as it kind of furthers that process, that is eligible for those funds.
Okay, thank you. And that's obviously money that won't, that that's a one time settlement. We won't get that again.
Correct. The economic development piece is the one time. The other piece for essential services, we will. Receive forty five thousand approximately for the next seven years. So that was a nine year process. They gave us two years in one this past year. So we'll, we'll see forty five thousand for the next seven years on that one.
Okay, and you mentioned in in your thing that. That our recreation activity was way down because of, of course, we had to close things for COVID. Are our full time employees in in that area doing other productive work for the city and the county?
Right, so they've been kind of reassigned in different areas. So they're helping in lots of different areas in the city. As as we are able, a few of the part time people are even helping out with the county testing sites. So we're utilizing people as as well as we can, so. Trying our best to do that.
Okay, and, and I know people sometimes ask, well, why didn't the city tighten its belt? In response to COVID, why are we, were we going for the long term sales tax increase? And, you know, and I do see evidence in these numbers of a significant drop in personnel costs as positions were held open. Or part time employees lost hours as a result of, you know, just holding things. Tightening that belt so that we could achieve a result that was, in fact, better than we had expected. That correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, let me, I may have a couple of things that I want to ask about in, and several stickies I discussed in the financial statements.
And I'll ask you, Councilmember Funk, are these like germane to us kind of? Basically, because this is a receive and file, are these some questions that you feel are really important to get out tonight? Or are they things that you might talk with the city manager with at a later time?
Yeah, I've been through the with the city manager and mostly I'll, I'll pick through, but. Mostly I'm looking for things that the public might misinterpret the documents if they worked, went through them and that are helpful to clarify. You know, but. What we have. So I'm going to pick and choose from my notes here. Let me, let me defer to other council members and I'll see if there are any of these that I have to come back to. If I'm, if I might.
Sure thing. I, so I think, Councilmember Borbo, you said you had a comment but not a question, or am I seeing?
Well, yes, I sent several minor questions to Jerry that she can answer at leisure at some point, you know, overall. This shows, I think that the city is very financially very well run. The staff does a very good job of controlling costs. We don't overestimate revenues to make ourselves feel good. So we do a good job estimating revenues and usually come in a little higher. You do a good job of budgeting costs and usually come in lower on costs. So we usually do better than than budgeted. And I think that's testament that overall the city is is financially very well run. And my concern, kind of the comment might be a question in here is sort of like Jeopardy. I can frame it in the form of a question. On page ninety eight and page ninety seven regarding our pension costs and our net pension liability. You know, pension stuff is can be very difficult to understand and. Even people like me that read, read about it a lot can get a little confused. But I think page ninety seven and ninety eight tell our story, and this is kind of the concern that. Because it's certainly not unique to Tasker Arrow, and it's not in any way reflective of any. Problem or issue caused by Tasker Arrow. But if you look on page ninety seven, the top line, it shows how much our pension costs have gone up every year. Over the last five years from two point two million to three point three million. And on page ninety seven, it shows our net pension liability going up over the same five year period from sixteen million now to twenty eight million. So this is like, if you had a mortgage and we raised your, you know, your payments. From two point two million to three point three million over five years, and then at the same times, and by the way, your principal balance is almost doubled. Or not almost doubled, but up about eighty percent. And like I said, this is very common happening in a lot of cities because of the. Several different issues we can, the way CalPERS does things, but it's a long term concern for us. And it's something, you know, I think we'll need to talk about at our strategic planning session. But overall, you know, we, our staff really does a very, very good job of managing the city's finances. I just, I think the pension issue, though, is big enough, significant enough that we, we should talk about it a little bit at strategic planning.
Yeah, and I would say that is probably the biggest one that the public tends to have questions about and tends to have some. You know, a bit of apprehension about because we see these costs escalating and maybe not understanding why, because there tends to be that sense that, well. Government is just spending money and they're giving unabated raises and they're doing all of these things. And really what's important, and I think the director did a good job, is is explaining. What can cause the balance to go up, that unfunded liability, that the change in the discount rate? When I heard, when I talked with her yesterday and found out they had changed software, that caused. A change in software. So all of these things that are completely out of the city's, you know, control. Causes these to go up. And I know that we've discussed in the past, you and I. Finance committee meetings and at public meetings about a potential one fifteen trust. And saving for that. So I think that is something that we we will be discussing again shortly.
Yes.
No. Any other council questions? I'll, I'll look to if Councilmember Dara's or Mayor Protim Newsom have any questions, give me a high sign. Otherwise, we will return to Councilmember Funk. All right, Susan.
Okay, thank you. I've trimmed my list to two questions for information and one question for humor. Because opportunities for that are limited in the financial statements. First, on page nine of the financial statements. In the section on in lieu and moderate and low income housing fund. I note that we're showing a balance there of about five point seven million dollars. And yet, when we recently considered what we could contribute to people's self help housing. There was the available amount that we could do is a lot smaller than that. Is, is that because some of this, the bulk of this money is not cash, but is already. Represents housing that is already built that people are living in?
Right, yes, those are, the bulk of that are loans that are already kind of on the books, so there's less. Actually cash available to loan out.
If you look at page sixteen, you can see that listed out as well.
Great, thank you. And then on page eleven. In the section on construction in progress, that's the second line of the data. In it, we have a current value of construction projects of about eight and a half million dollars. Now, we, we've seen in the roads budget and what you know there that we're getting about. Two and a half million for our measure F fourteen, and that's a lot bigger. So what else goes into that number?
There are a number of different projects in here. So we put items in here that are. Projects that are kind of in the middle of progressing. They're not quite finished by the time that six thirty twenty rolls around. So there are F fourteen projects in there, the Villa Avenue Bridge, the San Luisi Avenue Bridge. The portions of of the Del Rio intersection area, there's a lot of different projects that are in there. And collectively, it makes a big number at the end, but these are all things that we're working toward. They just weren't completed at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so when there's been, say, engineering work done, all of that engineering that was done to see whether we needed the roundabouts on Del Rio. That, those expenses would be reflected as construction and process assets right here.
That's correct. That's correct.
Great. And then. Last but not least, on measure, on measure, on the page thirty six. I note that the city's, the statement that the city's collection of zoo animals is not capitalized. Does that mean that we don't get to depreciate the tiger?
It does currently. When we first implemented this gas fee, we did have to do that. And it raised quite a fuss, I will tell you, in our zoo department in particular. So we have since been authorized to view it as a collection, so it is not. Have to be listed on our, our asset schedule. It was quite strange to have, suddenly have an appearance of an asset with a birth or a death of something. It was, it was very difficult to do. So we're quite pleased that we don't have to do that anymore.
Great, thank you.
Anything we can do to limit. Very nice. All right, with that, I will open it up to public comment on this item. So I will look to our webinar attendees, and if there's any member of the public who would like to comment, ask a question. You'll have three minutes. Go ahead and raise your hand. And I'll also ask Luke, as I'm looking for hands, if there's anyone on the phone that is wishing to comment.
We have no callers at this time.
Okay, and I will ask our city clerk, do we have any members of the public who emailed into us on this item?
We do not.
Okay, and with that, looking one last time at our members of the public on the webinar and seeing none, I will go ahead and close a public comment and bring it back to council. For a motion.
I'm who we accepted and filed the financial audit for the nineteen twenty fiscal year.
A second.
A motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Dara's?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And I do understand, as I'm looking at our panelists, we have our our treasurer, Jerry Seabock. On the line and, and my apologies, Mr. Seabock, because I'm going back and forth between attendees and panelists. And until I came back, I didn't notice that you were there, and I'm wondering if there's any comment that you would like to make, being not only our city treasurer, but CPA and former county auditor controller.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I, you know, I normally, I. I say how grateful I am to the city staff, the financial folks, especially and the city manager. But all the department heads, it's, it's an achievement to have this package sitting where it is and having a. A clean audit report is nothing to be taken for granted at all. So I don't really have any more insights. It, it's, it was a challenging year, and I think there's going to be now. We're already through the half of the next fiscal year. So it's gonna, eternal vigilance is going to be required, and they are doing it, and we, I appreciate that. And I think everybody in the city should appreciate what you all are doing in the city's leadership.
Thank you so much. And, and yes, I think we as a council echo those comments and really think. I mean, Director, this really falls onto your shoulders, and I know you have a lot of support to do it. You have an amazing department. And and the amount of the commitment and the effort and everything that you put into bringing us to where it is is pretty incredible. I know the city manager participates in that and it even goes beyond. So thank you for for all that you do. And Mr. Geis, too, thank you for being here this evening for once. I think this is one of the first times I think he's been here where he's just been able to be online and he hasn't been sitting. In the council chambers where we're going over more like long, long presentations, and it's like finally like nine thirty, ten o'clock, and we're like, all right, time for the audit report. I hope you're pleasantly surprised to be finished up at seven twenty five and off your computer and already at home. All right, well, with that, let's move on to our second management report. Item C two, and this is our fiscal year twenty twenty annual road report. This is always fun, and this will be our Public Works Director, Mr. Nick DeMar.
Actually, our administrative services director is gonna start out on this floor.
We'll tag team a little bit. We'll pull Nick in at the end.
Beautiful.
Okay, as you have indicated, this is the Citizen Sales Tax Oversight Committee. And the Citizen Sales Tax Oversight Committee approved the fiscal year twenty twenty annual report. Last month, and so now it's, it's coming to you for approval as well. Let me see. Nick, did you want to go through this part of it? Sorry, my PowerPoint is not the order I expected it to be in. Let's see. Okay, here, here we go. All right, sorry about that. Okay, the council adopted ordinance five eighty one in July of two thousand and fourteen. Which outlines the annual reporting requirements for the C stock committee. The annual report includes financial statements, revenue information, expenditure information. So the revenues, the retailers began collecting a half cent additional sales tax on April first, two thousand and fifteen. And the sales tax revenue that was earned for last fiscal year, July nineteen through June twenty twenty, was about just under two point five million. Interesting come that's listed on our financial statements is a hundred and fifty five thousand. Sounds like we're really great investors, which we do try to do that as well. But there is an accounting adjustment in there of eighty one thousand dollars. So at the end of the year, we have to adjust all of our. Investments to reflect fair market value at that time. So there was a paper gain of eighty one thousand dollars on that. So we actually did earn seventy four thousand. On that, the balance. These are the expenditures by project. So the two thousand and nineteen pavement rehab, we spent about two, just over two million on. The twenty twenty pavement rehab, we're just getting rolling with two hundred and seventy four. Of course, I'm sure you remember how we had to start kind of the, the design and the initial work. To get those projects done, so they often cross fiscal years. And so these are some of the items that would be in that construction in progress. Item that, that we discussed on the last item. The twenty twenty one pavement rehab was just under thirty two thousand. So in total, in the fiscal year, we spent just under two point four million. The fund balance of the financial statements for. For just the F fourteen is four million, two hundred thirty nine thousand, five hundred and twenty five. So as we discussed, the projects are kind of ongoing, projects are already budgeted and in the five year capital improvement project. So this isn't a windfall pot of cash here, it's being used, it just is kind of a timing difference on when we use it. And, and getting the, the projects rolling and that sort of thing. And I will let Nick go take it over from here.
So the Citizen Sales Tax Oversight Committee, whoever sees this and the newly measured D twenty as well now. Approved the, the annual report back on December tenth. They really didn't have too many comments on it, I don't believe at all, and they, I think the report actually has more detail. And it, then they actually typically like to see, so that's great. I know there's a couple of members, including the chair, and maybe another member or two that may want to comment. On this item at the end of our report. Next slide, Jerry. So just a little recap of some of the projects, the twenty nineteen pavement rehabilitation project. So just a little recap of some of the projects, the twenty nineteen pavement rehabilitation project, a total three point one seven miles. Seems like a long time ago, this project. But it's included Navarrette, they're on the bottom of the screen, also Belboa, Monterey, Del Rio, Sangre Gorialde, and Garcia Road. So some really good road sections, there was. I think it was completed about a year ago, we, we issued the final completion. A next slide, please. Here's picture, actually, I threw this picture in because it's kind of unique to this project. This was at Del Rio and Sangre Gorialde, there was this issue that of a culvert that kept getting plugged up with a lot of debris. Like, if we get the rain that we're expecting to get tonight into tomorrow, this old culvert would have just been plugged up and flooded out the road. So we went with this box culvert, and it's worked superiorly, very, very good. And it's much more superior over the old culvert, round culvert, dual culvert that we had. So well, it'll get a good test tonight and tomorrow, so we'll be keeping an eye on it. A next slide, please. The twenty twenty project, which is actually just nearing completion right now, includes these roads kind of on the east side of town, total of four point two four miles. So it's actually a very large project with some significant pavement work being done. But if you haven't driven these roads, I encourage you to, to check them out. Because they, it's a huge improvement over what they were. We just actually, last week, milled it over late Palomar on the very bottom there. That goes along the Chalk Mountain Golf Course. So the only piece left to complete is the, at the end of, at the cul-de-sac portion of Uniporo Avenue, which is kind of down towards the bottom there too. So with the rain, it might set us back a little bit. But for the most part, we're, we're nearing completion on this project. So I thank all the folks on the roads that live here and live in the area for their patience. A next slide, please. And then this brings the one project that's currently under design. Actually, we just got sixty percent plans last week, so we're reviewing those plans from Wallace Group. But includes these roads kind of in the south part of town, southwest part of town. So, you know, three point eight one miles total on this. And there's actually a, a twenty twenty-one resurfacing or, you know, surface treatment type project too, where we do micro-surfacing and crack sealing. That is also scheduled for next year, but it was no cost were incurred during this reporting period. Couple notable roads in here are Cormar, which is a pretty beat-up road. Marchant is pretty beat up too, between Cormar and Tascadaro Avenue. And then Pismo Avenue, Marchant Way, interestingly enough, on that, next to the lake, so that'll be great. Now, these roads are all, might just have a disclaimer, these roads were chosen, chosen a number of years ago through pavement management software and critical point management. So then Old Maraudie, San Rafael Road, San Guermore Lane, San Diego, and La Paz Lane. So all worthy roads to be, to be redone. A next slide, please. So the community road report is a brochure that we mail out to all residents in town. We did this from day one. As much as Jerry's report is very, very detailed. And for the accountants, they love it, but for, but for the, the average citizen sometimes that, you know, we're trying to capture some, just a little bit of their attention sometimes, we're all bombarded, myself included, with many things coming as, we wanted to put together the idea behind it, was put together something easy to read that they can look at and, and get something from. So we actually added a new, additional two panels last year to this because we're having a tough time conveying all the information. But on this one panel, and this will be a, I guess, a tri-fold or quadruple fold. But what to expect in twenty twenty once, we wanted to put on there kind of the roads that have already been completed, and then roads that are coming up as well. So in that, in that map, you can see the red roads, which are next year's roads, the yellow roads, which were project, we're just wrapping up. And then previous roads as well. But kind of gives a detail on that, just so people can see where, where the money's going. A next slide, please. And then, as I mentioned, actually, this middle, this middle panel, the Financial Statement Project Summary kind of summarizes the report that Jerry and her team put together. And, you know, just kind of gives a snapshot of where the money's being spent. It goes back basically three years or the prior years as well. So a lot of times, these projects span, have expenditures over the course of three fiscal years. So we want to kind of try to capture all those. It also includes PCI before and PCI after. So hopefully shows some measure of success as well. And then the other panels, one on the left is just a little background on the Tascadaro roads. And on the right panel, kind of still celebrating that, that great news that our PCI overall went up by three points last year, or in twenty nineteen. And still, I, I think, just, you know, I was kind of surprised, but it was very nice to, to know that. And I might add, it was the same people that were rating our roads that did it five years previously. And then just a little background on the F fourteen is on the lower right-hand panel. And if they want to get more information, there's a, a link where they can find that. Next slide, please. So then Jerry and I can take any questions that council may have. And I, as I mentioned, Chair Jones is also, I think, tuned into the meeting and as well as Member Anderson.
So I had seen Chair Jones and Member Anderson, but I'm not seeing them now. Flipping back and forth between the two, so we'll come back to them if they are for, for public comment. So Nick, as I'm looking at the roads report, the twenty-three point nine three, that will be once the twenty twenty-one pavement rehabilitation is complete. Twenty-three point nine three will be the total, you know, maintenance rehabilitation that has been done mileage-wise just related to F fourteen since its inception, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then I, I know we, we talk about this a lot, but it's something, a question that I get a lot, and I'm sure that my fellow council members do too. And I know this is where you like to geek out, so I want to give you a moment to let the public know how roads are chosen. Because the, sometimes you think that maybe the council is choosing roads. We actually have no, no, you don't want us choosing roads, we don't choose roads. The Citizen Sales Tax Oversight Committee are not the ones choosing the roads. And in essence, staff really isn't choosing roads per se. We go, we, we use some very sophisticated software. And so Nick, if you want to let the public know how we go about making those important decisions.
Sure, so the Public Works uses a software program called Streetsaver. And what we do is we enter the condition of all the roads in town that we maintain. So there's things such as, you know, square footage, you know, the pavement sections. And then we go out, or we hire somebody, go out a consultant to go raid out the roads every four to five years. And they do things like count the number of cracks and how, what types of cracks, and what kind of distresses are there, and how much distress. And they come back, plug that all into the software program, and it updates, you know, the conditions. And then it scores each road on a score of one to one hundred, one hundred being a brand-new perfect road. And then we set parameters in there. So this is something way back when I first started, I was brand spanking new here, probably all of like three months. But we actually decided, the council at that time, what those PCI breakpoints, we call them, were. And these breakpoints are the scores that typically, like a road, like an arterial road, would go from a maintenance effort to a rehabilitation effort. So PCI around seventy is when it goes from a, a heavy maintenance or heavy resurfacing, like a micro-surfacing, to like a melanovally. And then another PCI drop at, I believe, thirty-five or something like that. And then we have additional breakpoints for residential and collector roads. I might add that none of the roads on the F fourteen are arterial roads that are being used. So all the money is being used on collector roads and local roads, residential roads. These are the roads that were being, like, there was never gonna be money, or there was gonna be hard, hard to find money to do these roads. And that was one of the selling points of the F fourteen. So anyways, those breakpoints, so people always ask me, well, how do you pick the roads? And I'm sure they ask all the council members and the mayor all the time too. But if you're around that breakpoint, so if you're, you're on, a road is around like seventy, then chances are right above seventy, we're gonna want to catch those roads before, you know, they cost a smaller unit price per square foot to fix and improve than before it drops into that next category where we can't go back and say do a, a micro-surfacing on. But now we have to do a melanovally. So we try to catch those roads before they cross those breakpoints. So if you look at a lot of the roads, that's where their breakpoints are, is right around there. So hopefully that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and Nick, maybe you can tell, because sometimes we'll hear from the public, you know, if, if, you've got to see this road, like, it's gotta be the worst road in Tascadaro. And I say, unfortunately, there are others that are probably quite similar. We're making progress, but you know, sometimes somebody, you know, sees this one road every day, and they think, how can this not be on the list? Can you maybe give a little bit of insight into that?
Yeah, so you know, once a road, let's say, I don't know, one I hear a lot about is like Dolores. I mean, that's, it's pretty terrible. Or, you know, I don't know, I mean, I could throw out a lot of names, but you know, just use Dolores, for instance. That road, you know, looks like it should have been done a long time ago. But not doing anything now, it's not gonna really change how much money we're gonna have to spend on it, whether it's done, you know, two years ago, this year, or in five years. It's really gonna be about the same, I guess, unit price, because it's, you know, it's a failed roadway. So we need to come in, do probably a full-depth reclamation on it, and do that extra effort. So sometimes those roads, they still come up, and we, we try to get a lot of that money to be, some of the money to be spent on those roads that are failed, that, you know, really pose, are starting to pose some safety hazards too. So those roads are not chosen by staff, they are still selected through critical point management. So there's some parameters we can put into that to, to allow like the full gamut. So we don't have all the roads that are failed that never get fixed. So it's, it's, I don't know, I, I really believe it's a fair and equitable way of, of selecting roads. And, and then we have five areas of town as well, so we cycle through those five areas. The first two years, we just picked roads all over town to do. And then we started cycling through like north, east, south, west, and central. So all those roads have, that, that way allows us to have the contractors not working twenty, you know, twenty or ten miles away from each other, like a road up on El Monte, and then they're also doing a road like, you know, down by Paloma Park or something. So we kind of keep it in a quadrant of town for a scale of economy.
Yeah. Thank you. Now, you did a very, very nice job describing that. And, and you also mentioned that we're talking about the F fourteen funds and the, the collectors and the local roads. And then certainly, there's money from local transportation funds, it is, tends to be the main source that we get that is spent on those arterials, those, you know, those El Caminos and things like that. So.
Right, and the SP one money, that new pot of money that has been provided to the city, about six hundred and forty thousand a year, that money is really trying to be spent on the more arterial roadways, you know, or El Camino and improving those roads. So, yeah.
Yeah, we're doing, I mean, in, in, in a city where we have a lot more roads than we have money, more than I think any other city can say. I, we're, we're doing, I think, a really, the best job that we can, a solid job with trying to get that mix, keeping, of course, the arterials in, in the best condition we can and, and hitting those local roads. So thank you for the, the work that you do, and staff do a really good job with that. And when will this report be going out?
The brochure?
Yes.
Usually, it's sent over the printer, so it's printed and mailed out by the company. Typically, it's out within a month of this meeting, so I'd probably say by mid-February, hopefully.
Thank you very much. Okay, awesome. Thank you. And I will ask if we've got any other council questions. I'm seeing Councilmember Borbo, I think, and then Councilmember Darris.
Yes, thank you, I had to find my mute button. And yes, I think, Mayor, you outlined several things, or, or Mr. DeBar in your responses, explaining. Overall, this has been a very effective program. And the one thing, as the mayor noted, we don't pick the streets, but we, the council, have been very good about keeping the promise to the taxpayers that this money would be spent on neighborhood roads and collectors, and that's what it's all gone towards. And, and so kudos to you for the, for success. I was curious, and I see part of my answer is actually right here on the brochure. I was curious whether or not, when we, when we do fix a road, whether they're all then fixed basically to a PCI score of one hundred. And I see here, you do have a PCI after column, and most of them are a hundred, but a few are ninety-five, ninety-eight, and as low as ninety. What's, what's happening there when, you know, we, you know, we're applying the right fix at the right time in the sense of, you know, before it falls into a, some greater level of disrepair that requires a greater expenditure? How come some of them don't get to a hundred?
So a lot of those are roads that were, did not have, like, all the pavement removed or a new layer of asphalt put on it, but were cracked sealed or, and micro-surfaced or things like that. So a lot of those roads, they still have, you know, they don't have quite the right ability, or they still have some distresses, it's just covered up, and so we know it's still down there. But yeah, so that's why those don't always get all the way back up to a hundred. If we actually take off the pavement and like put a new fresh layer of asphalt on top, those are the ones that typically go back to a hundred. But a lot of the resurfacing or maintenance projects, as we call them, typically don't get you back to a hundred unless the road's in perfect condition.
Great, great to know, thank you, because I mean, you drive on them, you look at them, and they look beautiful. And, but it's good to know, obviously, you're keeping track of, no, that one's still not perfect underneath. So, very good, thank you.
Councilmember Darris.
Yeah, just a quick question, and maybe you can expand a little bit more on something, Nick, what you'd already talked about. But I know that the roads are chosen, as you said, with this system, it's, it's pretty complex, but it gives a road a score, and that's how roads are put in, you know, in front of other roads for repair. But I've heard comments from some residences that'll, that'll say, hey, you know, you know, my road has been in need of repair for years and years, and I saw the road, you know, adjacent down the street, you know, whatever, repaired twice, and mine still hasn't been touched in over twenty years. And I don't know if you can expand more on how something like that happens, if it's just a traffic thing or, or anyway. But that's, I hear that a lot, and I don't really have the answer other than to say, it's, it's a formula, and if it doesn't make it to the top of the formula, it's unfortunate. But I don't know anything better than that.
Yeah, and we hear that a lot too, you know, why are you fixing that road down there, which you really should be fixing, is this road? That's the road that needs to be fixed. Well, if we did that, we wouldn't be doing four miles of, of road a year, we might be doing one mile. So, you know, we're trying to like best stretch that money as best we can and make the best financial decision to increase the overall PCI, the overall condition of the whole roadway system, not just, you know, the really bad roads and things like that. And it's not, it's not really a good, wise financial decision either to, to just focus on all the good. And it's not, it's not really a good, wise financial decision either to, to just focus on all the good roads and keep those in good repair. Because those other roads that they're eventually, instead of, um, an overlay, melanoma overlay, they're going to need to be fully reconstructed if you let them continue to deteriorate. So if you know of a road that's been worked on twice in recent memory, I'd love to know which one it is, because I, I can't think of any that have had construction.
All right. Thanks, Nick.
Sure.
Councilmember Borbo.
I wanted to add that though, too. I mean, sometimes people see something worked on twice and it's because a contractor came along, tore it up and they're responsible for putting that back. But also we have in our community 30 miles of non-city maintained roads. And so a lot of folks, you know, are still not aware of that. And so they'll say, you know, you never fixed my road. And the sad truth is we never will, because it's not a city maintained road. Um, and that's kind of a difficult thing to explain sometimes. But your website, at least last time I looked, was very good about showing the non-city maintained roads. So people could look, uh, and your site is also good at showing what, you know, the future projects are. So people could kind of see, well, when, when's my street? And then they're going to go, oops, it's not a city maintained road. Important thing for people to realize.
Thanks for bringing that up, Charles. That's what was going to be my next comment. So thank you.
So any other council questions? Uh, Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, just one here. I noticed that Santa Lucia is not on this list of, of completed projects. And I've heard all kinds of wonderful comments from people for that lower portion of the Santa Lucia, down by the high school and, and all that, you know, it looks so nice and, and so helpful to the community. I'm assuming that's because it is not considered, um, in the neighborhood or collector category that is approved for F-14 money, but was part of our commitment to continue to spend other city money on roads at the same level and not have the additional taxpayer resources to plant those expenditures. Is that correct?
That is correct. I believe that road was funded with local transportation funding, which is the typical funding that the city gets from the, the gas tax. So, um, that is correct. And so we continue to do those other roads as well. And, uh, so that's always a great thing. And that road, by the way, remember that road went down five miles per hour, the speed limit? And that was, survey was done after that road was completed. So it's kind of interesting. Usually the speeds go up after, after we fix these roads. But that one actually went down. So.
Interesting. Thank you.
All right. With that, I will, um, open up to public comment. And I received a, a text message from Chair Jones that I will read. They had a electronic mix-up, only one Zoom account and multiple people needed to use Zoom. So, uh, he, for the record, um, he says, my comments were to be that we on the Citizen Sales Tax Oversight Committee are prepared to meet with finance staff regarding D-20 as well as F-14. Staff is doing great, great, Nick, at all. We support the motion to expand $5,000 on the, or to spend $5,000, expend $5,000 on the road report. Feedback from homeowner, homeowner on the F-14 expenditures has been great. And that is from Gregor Jones, Chair of the Citizen Sales Tax Oversight Committee. And with that, I will look to the hands in the webinar to see if there are any members of the public wishing to speak on this item. And I will also, as I'm looking for hands, ask Luke if there are any callers.
We have no callers at this time.
Thank you. And I will ask our city clerk if we've received any email comments on this item.
We have not.
Okay. Looking to the public one last time. I'm not seeing anybody wishing to speak on this item. So I will go ahead and close public comment and I will bring that back to council for a motion.
I agree that we adopt staff's recommendations.
Do I have a second?
A second?
Uh, we have a motion by Mayor, Mayor Protem Newsom, a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Darris?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newsom? Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now we are on to our one discussion item of the coronavirus COVID-19 issues. Of course, the, the biggest news this, this week is being out of the stay-at-home order and back into purple. And it's been great seeing already notices from businesses and wineries who are serving food and others like, you know, we're opening, we're opening, we're opening. So, um, and I'm finally going to get a bang trim. That's my biggest, that's my personally, my biggest thing right now. So that's, that's Friday. Stay tuned. Um, I will hand this over to our city manager, Ms. Rickard for, for the report.
Thank you. I just want to also update, update people on vaccines. I know there's a lot of information, um, out there in the news. The county is trying to get that out. We are vaccinating as many people as we can with the vaccines available. They continue to roll out more and more and we continue to increase our capacity to vaccinate. I know that the fire chief and our fire personnel are very involved in that. What I do want to do is remind people that, uh, healthcare providers and people over 75 are the people that they're vaccinating now. If you go to, and maybe I can share my screen if that's okay. If you go to readyslow.org and you click on the COVID information, there's a lot of vaccine information available on that recover. But if you go down here at the very bottom of the page that it brings you to, but subscribe for email updates. I signed up for this a couple of weeks ago on vaccine updates in English. And it does notify me and send me a notification, um, that I can just click and it'll bring me right to the website and stuff like that. They have been sending me, uh, as part of this, notifications of the vaccine appointments opening up as soon as they open up and who they're for. So I want to encourage the public to sign up for this. That way you don't have to keep checking and saying, okay, are they opening up any new appointments or anything like that? This, this will get you notified right away. So, um, not a lot of people know about that feature on the website. They also have a lot of information, obviously, about, um, vaccines, where they are in the vaccination project, process, um, in addition to the, the things we've been seeing a lot, all along on businesses that are open, what the current guidelines are and, uh, numbers of cases, et cetera. And that's just what I want to pass along.
Great. And, um, we really, we put this on the agenda back when this started, just in case there were any kind of back and forth or questions or discussion we needed to have as a council. So we wanted to make it sure it was on the agenda. So I will see, look to my council members and see if there are any discussion points or questions that you wanted to bring up. I see none. I will go ahead and open it up to the public and see if there's any other member of the public that wishes to, um, to speak on this item. I'm just seeing a handful of people remaining. You can raise your hand. Uh, and I will ask Luke if we have any callers on the line.
We do not.
And I will ask our city clerk if we have anybody that has emailed in with public comment with regards to this item.
We do not.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and, uh, Councilmember Funk, I just, as I went to public comment, I saw you take yourself off mute. Was there a question or a comment that you had?
I was just going to confirm with the city manager that, uh, the changes that, you know, that, um, come with are going back to the purple tier, um, include outdoor dining at restaurants, but do not include indoor dining at restaurants. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. And we are still all being encouraged to continue to wear masks when we are out in public and keep our distance from people outside of our, our little family bubbles. Is that correct?
Absolutely. None of those guidelines and or orders have changed.
Okay. Thank you for confirming.
Thank you. And with that, we will move on to, uh, council announcements and committee reports. And I'll just kind of go, um, left to right on my screen here. I'll start with, uh, Councilmember Borbo.
Uh, yes, um, since our last meeting, I did attend an IWA meeting. And the thing of note there, I think I've mentioned several times that, uh, the focus is going to be on, uh, implementation of SB 1383, which will impose all kinds of requirements on small businesses regarding organic wastes. One of the things that came out in the discussion is, as I mentioned before, the IDMA has, um, from a strategic planning perspective, has decided, you know, to focus solely on those state mandates. One of the things that comes out of that though, would be, uh, as we are required to pass ordinances either at the IWA level or at the individual city level, in some cases, that enforcement, should it come to that, um, would fall to the individual cities. And, uh, I was a little concerned about that because we, you know, don't have a lot of staff for doing that kind of enforcement. Neither does the IWA for that matter. And the issue is the IDMA is not really set up to write citations or, you know, have a ticket book, if you will, that sort of thing. But so that's kind of the most significant thing that, because my concern is that the state is, is implement this, may get rather pushy in terms of expecting jurisdictions to enforce some of these, uh, rather extensive measures will be imposed on businesses. So, uh, anyway, we'll see. It's a work in progress still. But that's going to be the IDMA focus is, uh, implementing SB 1383.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Newsom.
Need to put the mute icon in the center of the screen, not on the corner. The hardest thing to get turned back on. Um, the only, our design review committee had, um, meeting has been postponed until February. We did have a League of California Cities, um, meeting on the 21st. We had guest speaker Senator Laird, who discussed, um, Q and A about some of the decisions that are be done at the Capitol to try to get kids back in school, the issues with vaccines. Very informative. Um, and then we all got to share the first thing that we get to do when lockdown's up and we return to a normal society and a perfect world, it was done tomorrow. And, uh, most of us just wanted to socialize. So I think all of us are kind of maxed out with the Zoom meetings. But it, good, it was an opportunity for all of us to be able to be together without having to travel. And I think there was more participation and it was a good meeting. So, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Darris.
Uh, last week I had an orientation meeting for the air pollution control districts. I got to meet, um, the members there and, and get to understand what that's going to be all about. And tomorrow we have our first meeting of the year. So I'm sure I'll meet the rest of the members if I haven't met them all and get kicked off on that. So that's all I've got.
Enjoy.
Thanks.
And Councilmember Funk.
Uh, yes, the busy time. A week from Thursday will be the first meeting of the Tascadero groundwater, Adeska Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Uh, this normally it's quarterly meeting held in January, but it's been pushed out to, uh, February. So that'll be my first meeting with that group. And the design review, as Councilmember Newsom mentioned, will be, uh, on the 10th. Homeless Services Oversight Council met last week. Three things of note from that meeting. First, uh, we approved, uh, recommendations to the Board of Supervisors for roughly $11 million in COVID-related grants. Uh, these are not just to address people that are currently homeless, but also to address trying to prevent homelessness in the tide of people who are behind on their rent. Uh, this won't be nearly as, as much as the size of the need. And additional money is coming and that won't meet, you know, the whole need either. But, um, but it is a, it is a start. It all, this money, part of the recommendations also was, are funding to complete renovations at the, um, the Paso Robles Shelter Project, where Echo and, uh, Hapslow and People's Self-Help Housing combined together to acquire the Motel Six property and converted into a combination of overnight emergency sheltering and permanent supportive housing. So it's, so that, the recommendation should be enough to get that project, um, all finished on the inside. It is already housing people, um, in that, at least in the shelter portion. And then, um, the, we also sent a set of recommendations that have been developed by, um, an ad hoc committee working on encampment issues that are, you know, the city manager mentioned clearing out a number of them in Tascadero. And these are a problem, uh, countywide. Uh, and a group looking on what are the alternatives for the, for those folks? And a set of, of options and recommendations that have been forwarded now to the city managers and county administrator, uh, for review and comment before, uh, they're finalized and taken to the Board of Supervisors. This is work that was originally requested by Supervisor Bruce Gibson, because of, you know, seeing all of the problems in the coastal areas where there are no shelters. But it's a countywide issue and, um, there's lots of interest in, in a multi-site countywide solution. And lastly, um, I was elected Chair of the Homeless Services Oversight Council.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service on that committee.
Thank you.
Our council, I should say. Thank you.
Yeah.
I, let's see, um, since we last met, uh, we did have our countywide mayor's meeting. And we kind of fell out of sync with that last year with COVID. We, um, our last in-person meeting was in March, you know, basically like the day the, the shelter and place order went into effect. And it was Dr. Bornstein who was our speaker. And we even took a picture of us social distancing with elbows. Of course nowadays, social distance with full hands. And then we had one Zoom meeting since then, but, um, i- in April. And so it was nice to get back together. Senator Laird, um, spoke to us and really the topic was COVID. But it's, you know, it's really important for us to have, you know, that connection throughout the county and really be able to have those relationships with one another as mayor. So I'm glad that we're getting back to that now. And between now and the next time we meet, I will be having a Economic Vitality Corporation meeting, the City Selection Committee, uh, and Slow Carb will be meeting. So I'll report next time around. And with that, we will move on to, uh, any individual determinations. I have none on my agenda. Uh, do we have any from council? None? Any from staff? I'm seeing no hands raised. And with that, uh, we will adjourn our city council meeting. See you all on February 9th.
All right. Bye, everybody.